That this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board Meeting of June 21, 2023. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the Board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the Chair if you aren't able to hear or see something. Please know that if any Planning Board members have potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the Board initiating the hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the Chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the Chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and those who are neither for nor against but may wish to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the Board through the Chair. Any questions must go to and through the Chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The Chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or Board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the Chair at his or her, his sole discretion, may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the Chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the Chair will ask if there are any new comments, then the applicant will be allowed to make one single rebuttal in response to testimony which is being, was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the Chair will accept no additional public comment. However, the member of the Board at the Chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of the project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreland, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the Board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of facts. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the Board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the Board has adopted the finding, findings for the project you are interested in. After the Planning Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the Board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the Board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. The city ordinances and comprehensive plans are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Welcome. First day of summer, so pretty nice out there. Let's get started. First item on our agenda is old business filed number J-28-7C, 16 River Street, Melsom River Bistro. At the last meeting, this was, this was tabled, although we didn't really hear anything on it. So Jamie, can you just get us oriented on this, and then we'll ask the applicants to speak?
Yeah, and the applicant has requested minor site plan approval to convert a vacant commercial property and a vacant lot next door into a full-service restaurant with associated parking lot and outdoor patio deck area. This was tabled two weeks ago at site plan. For more details on the plan set, the consultant, Carl Beal, did a great job on a quick turnaround, so was able to get that on the agenda for site plan yesterday and planning board today. And since yesterday, he has provided us an updated plan again, although I'm not sure anybody had time to review it, but he is very responsive.
Great, thank you. Really too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Carl Beal, civil engineer, working for Greg Warlow and the Melsom River Bistro LLC, and is interested in redeveloping.
Sorry for the interruption. Could you just state your address for the, for the record as well?
My address? 15 Deborah Avenue, Sanford, Maine.
Thank you.
Yep. The applicant, Mr. Warlow, is looking to redevelop the properties at 6 and 16 River Street, formerly the location of a former Carquest Auto Parts store, retail facility, and a bank, bank and parking lot structure on the adjacent lot. So we have designed the site plan to renov, it's going, the existing building is going to be renovated totally for a new restaurant, new kitchen, storage areas, et cetera. There is a new deck that's proposed on the south side of the building. We relocated that deck from the original location next to the river to more than 25 feet from the river to comply with the shoreline zoning requirements. You've probably seen multiple copies of the plans in your, in your packet. The latest plan came after we received, I received a call from Matt Hill a week ago today, and the Fire Department was interested in a public-private partnership to allow the Fire Department to continue to use the parking lot for testing their trucks and training their employees on pumping out of the river during a fire. So we met on-site with a bunch of city staff, and after that, I adjusted the parking lot to regrade it so that all stormwater ran towards River Street rather than into the river to provide, the whole parking lot would be, will now be entirely redone, ground up, added gravel, new pavement, et cetera, to support, to support fire trucks in addition to providing parking facilities for the new restaurant. So that's, that's on the plan. That's before you. Following the meeting yesterday with the Site Plan Review Committee, I relocated the dumpsters as they requested to the south end of the parking lot. I added erosion controls along the river by putting silt fence along the existing guardrail. The guardrail can support it, and then the toe of the silt fence can be, can be held down with some gravel, crushed stone, maybe some blocks, something like that. Let's see. I added a note about the paving detail would be similar to the city DOT detail that is on the River Street construction drawings that would work for this parking lot, I believe. We are going to do some more exploration to verify what existing gravels are on the bank, the parking lot site. I added a waiver request to the plan. Because we're only able to have 34 parking spaces, the ordinance requires a total of 50, a four-to-one ratio with 140 patrons, patron seating in the restaurant, and then there's 15 employees that are going to be working. So I added a note on the plan to reduce, allow a reduction from 50 to 34 spaces, and stated that change in ratio would be, would go from four-to-one to 7.4-to-one. And then I also added storm drains in the new parking lot to collect the water and then, and then convey it to River Street. In an earlier packet, I provided a, I provided a letter regarding the change of a nonconforming use so that there would be no greater adverse impact. I was told the Board needs to, needs to agree that that's the case in this, in this instance. And that's a, pretty much an overview. There's still, there's still work to be done on the public-private partnership, but we continue down that path, and I think it's probably a good, a good situation for both the applicant and for the city. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll probably get to some questions after the public hearing, and then we will, I'm sure we'll get back to you.
Sure.
Appreciate that. All right, so I will declare the public hearing reopened from our last meeting. Just looking to see, is there anybody in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this project?
Yes, Matt Hill.
Thank you. So as Mr. Beal just mentioned, the city is interested in having a public-private partnership on this lot for the purposes of Fire Department access. And as he said, we did meet on-site, and basically, we're pretty confident that everybody can get something that they want out of this. During the Stenton Mill fire, the Fire Department pulled 7 million gallons of water out of the pond, and while the Water District was only able to provide 4 million gallons, further for these training purposes that can happen off-hours with the restaurant, the Water District is not in support generally of pulling water out of their system because of the cavitation within their lines that it causes, the disruption of sediment, and they subsequently get complaints about discolored water, essentially. So the Fire Department initially did some analysis on other spots that they could be pulling this water from or doing this testing from, and there are very few, if none, without significant traffic disruption, i.e., parking a fire truck on a bridge and closing the road down in an emergency. So this has significant benefit, and then in discussions with Matt Preventer and Jamie Cole, Aaron Moriarty, you know, I would like to give the Planning Board some confidence that the Department of Public Works with the blessing of the city manager and the city council could authorize the funding for such work, though in our discussion on-site, we've left the proposal of, of the arrangement, the initial proposal of the arrangement on the applicant. So with that, I'll take that to the city manager, and I'm very sure, given that the city's business-friendly, supportive stance, that we can work something out.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else who would like to speak for, or in favor of this project?
Mr. Chairman, it's Mary Hastings from the Growth Council.
Yes.
And again, just being the cheerleader of the group, I'd like to say we are, the Growth Council is supporting this. This will do a lot for the downtown area. I think this will, with the Stenton Mill across the street, which we are also hoping will, will come to fruition, and this, this restaurant, that will change River Street, and I think will help the economic growth in the area in the downtown that we're working very hard on. So we're, we're for this project. I've been working with Greg Warlow. He has the ability to be able to pull this project off, so I'm here to support that.
All right, thank you. All right, last call for anyone who would like to speak in favor. Matt?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, on my list of things to mention as well, was the public-private partnership process here is not unprecedented. In fact, the city is engaged with a public-private partnership with the Stenton Mill right across the street and the Sewer District. So basically, we've done this before.
All right, anybody who would like to speak not in favor of this project, either in the room or on Zoom? Anybody who would like to speak neither for nor against but would like to make a general comment or ask a question? Right, I declare the public hearing closed, and we can pick it up for Planning Board discussion.
The RACE grant, is that in 2026? Is that how long we're going to have to wait for that parking lot to get finished?
I defer that to Matt. The short answer is no. The long answer is that some of the funding that we had set aside for some of the components of the RACE grant may, may be eligible for funding as part of our, our public-private partnership. But no, the answer to your question is no.
Okay.
I got just one quick question. I don't remember if I heard this in comments from somewhere. Were there any concerns with the retaining wall in that area of Number One Pond? Have those been addressed?
Well, defer to Matt again on that one.
All right, I should be there in person. So we have a structural engineer on, on call, who is Jason Glant, professional engineer, structural engineer with Wright Pierce, who came out and looked at it this week, and he took a look at the wall. We want to do some exploration in the lot, and just determine the, there's a part of the wall that's, that's in a mode of failure, and we want to determine if that's overturning, i.e., the entire wall is tipping towards the pond, or it's just a portion of the wall that snapped and headed towards the pond. But something that he did give us some confidence on is that for the, for the use of a fire truck, basically, you think of like a point load on the ground, that only has a certain, I want to call it, just like a sphere of influence, basically. Like if, if you go out a certain distance, there's no influence on that wall. So just in conversation, and he's going to get us a written report on this, if, if that buffer is 15 feet wide and the fire truck is no closer than 15 feet to the wall, it shouldn't make the wall any worse. That being said, we are going to do a full write-up on the wall with recommendations and, and discuss, you know, I'm sure as part of the public-private partnership, we'll discuss ownership of the wall and liability for the wall. But the initial, the initial analysis from his first take on it was that if you keep the fire truck 15 feet away, it won't make the wall any worse.
A quick question in regards to the RACE grant. Does that open the parking lot to overnight parking during off-business hours? Or would that be a concern?
That is not something we've discussed.
And then the other question I had is, I was noticing in the plans that there are parking spots for handicapped in front of the building, and I can't remember if there was a note that said, no parking in front of the building. Those went away.
They moved the handicap spots.
Oh, okay, perfect. Excellent, thank you. No, that's perfect. So all the questions that I have?
So I have, I have two, two, well, one's a question about the parking ordinance, or waiver. Any concerns with that? Any thoughts on, from our side?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay. So the last one would just be more procedural. The public-private partnership, that sounds like it's really just an agreement between the applicant and the, and the city. It shouldn't really have, I don't believe it should have any bearing on, on our decision tonight, so we don't need a condition or anything. So I guess the, just something else for us to consider, while we are waiting for the analysis and the report from the structural engineer on that retaining wall, we probably should add a condition about the satisfactory results.
How do you want that worded?
Give me a second.
Something along the lines of the applicant provides a report from a structural engineer saying the wall is not in danger of catastrophic failure?
Well, that should come from Matt Hill.
Yeah, and in this case, the city already took care of that analysis. We're just waiting for the results. So we're going to approve it, assuming that it is going to come back with no other changes being needed to ensure that wall is safe to hold that.
So generically, any, any change to an approved plan has to get back for review. So if we approve the plan as presented tonight, and then it's determined that wall has to be replaced, they will have to come back and ask for an amendment to the plan to correct that wall.
So we, the condition wouldn't make any sense anyways.
Right. Because that's already one of the standard conditions of approval. Any, any change to the approved plan has to come back for some level of review. I'm, I'm not saying that would have to come all the way back to you. It would depend on the scope of it. In this case, it's in the shoreline zone, that would have to come back to you.
Okay, appreciate that.
Who's responsible for the wall? That's the city, right?
I think they're trying to figure that out.
That is.
Did you ask who owns the wall?
Yeah.
That's still being decided.
That's up in the air, okay.
Certainly, it's within the public interest to protect the water body, so that's, that's why the city is involved with the analysis in the first place.
Great.
I do want to note that I think it's pretty great that the, that you guys are working with the Fire Department. I think that's awesome to kind of keep that business as usual. It's kind of cool. I actually didn't even know that.
All right, any other comments before we go off to findings, facts?
280-16-7.1 utilization of the site is proposed that it is met because the proposed site plan reasonably utilizes the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.6 stormwater management is met because it adequately, adequate provisions have been made for stormwater management.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.7 erosion control is met because adequate provisions will be made for erosion control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.11 natural features has been met because the project is designed to minimize impacts on natural features of the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.13 exterior lighting has been met because exterior lighting associated with proposed development shall be capped, shielded, directed downward, and retained on-site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.14 solid waste disposal has been met because solid waste is proposed to be deposited into enclosed dumpsters and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.15 landscaping is met with condition, with the condition that the applicant landscape according to the Design Review Committee recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.16 shoreline relationship has been met because the proposed development is designed to improve site impact in the shoreline zone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.17 technical and financial capacity has been met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.2 access to the site, 280-16-7.3 access into the site, 280-16-7.4 internal, sorry, internal vehicle circulation, 280-16-7.5 pedestrian circulation have been met because the development will not create hazards to vehicle or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
280-16-7.8 water supply, 280-16-7.9 sewer disposal, 280-16-7.10 utilities, 280-16-7.12 groundwater protection, 280-16-7.16 shoreline relationship, 280-16-7.18 buffering, and 280-16-7.19 airport encroachment is not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to point out that Jamie read offshore land relationship, which was actually already mentioned.
My apologies. Please, please disregard that one.
Sorry.
Any other discussion? Motion to approve. Oh, sorry. All in favor?
In favor.
Five, zero. All right, so we go on to the motion.
The Planning Board accepts the information in the June 19, 2023, Summer Report, and the June 21, 2023, Recommendation to the Planning Board, and finds the proposed Minor Site Plan Application Number J-287C for site improvements to create a patio and associated parking on parcel J-287, and for the reuse of the commercial vacant building located at 16 River Street in Sanford, has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By July 21, 2023, unless other arrangements have been made with the Planning Director, provide five copies of revised plans to the Planning Department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. The applicant updates the site plan to place a dumpster in a location that meets the requirements of City Code Chapter 220-26. The applicant updates the site plan to show proposed methods of erosion and sediment control. The applicant updates the site plan to show the construction details of the parking lot. And the applicant updates the site plan to show parking calculations. As a side note, he, he gave us that plan today, we just haven't had time to review it. So he's kind of already met part of that. And then standard conditions of approval, two, performance guarantee, six, inspection fiasco, seven, pre-construction meeting, eight landscaping, and nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero. Good luck.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. All right, so moving to item number two on our agenda, new business file, R-14-24, 122 San Pond Road, Patterson Private Way. Jamie, if you want to get us oriented on this before the applicant speaks.
Yeah, in this case, the applicant has requested approval for a minor site plan and private way approval to access our rear lot and provide required frontage for two future gift lots to family members. This went to site plan yesterday with no major concerns brought up.
Are you with, you're must be applicant?
Yep. Rob McSorley with Sbegger Technics, address 75 John Roberts Road here, repertory and Mark and Susan Patterson. As stated, they're basically proposing a private way into an existing single-family lot. The purpose of this private way is to access two deeded lots that will go to relatives of the Pattersons. Therefore, the lot split off is not a subdivision by, by code or rules and whatnot. The site, the lot is in the rural residential zone. The requirements for the lots that will be created is a two acres net. They've done that, they're a little bit more than two acres total. The entire parcel, the parent parcel is almost 19 acres. We'll be accessing, of course, private way off San Pond Road. They have a 50-foot wide private way. There is some improvements that are going to be done to the existing driveway as far as widening is concerned. That was a concern yesterday, that was brought up in the site plan review, and we're going to add, for the engineering plans that have been done, details for the widening of that in the notes that were requested. Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward, and we'll answer any questions you have. Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward and we'll answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you. So I will now declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project? Either in the room or on Zoom. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Is there anybody who would like to speak neither for nor against but would like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, declare the public hearing closed and move it on to planning board discussion. Any discussion on our end?
I have no questions or comments.
All right, let's move on to finding facts.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one utilization of the site is been met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six stormwater management has been met because adequate provisions have been made for stormwater management.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven erosion control has been met because adequate provisions will be made for erosion control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven natural features have been met because the project is designed to minimize impacts on natural features of the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen technical and financial capacity has been met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twenty point one, no more than one dwelling unit and related accessory built-in and uses on a site, has been met because there are no more than one dwelling unit planned per lot accessed from this private way.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twenty point two maintenance agreement has been met because the applicant had provided a draft copy of the proposed maintenance agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twenty point three minimum standards has been met because the proposed private way appears to meet all applicable ordinance requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two access to the site. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three access into the site. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four internal vehicle circulation. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five pedestrian circulation have been met because the development will not create hazards to vehicle or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes five zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight water supply. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine sewer disposal. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten utilities. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve groundwater protection. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen solid waste disposal. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen shoreline relationship. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen buffering. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen airport encroachment. The applicant is not proposing any development, therefore the standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
The planning board accepts the information in the June nineteen twenty twenty-three summer report and the June twenty-first twenty twenty-three recommendation to the planning board grants the requested waivers and finds that the proposed minor site plan and private way for file R fourteen twenty-four to construct a private way to provide frontage and access for two parcels on property owned by Mark and Suzanne Patterson and located at one twenty-two San Pond Road in Sanford has satisfied the requirements of Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By July twenty-first twenty twenty-three, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. Pause. Matt Preventure, I have a note in here that the applicant addresses all concerns raised in the Assistant City Engineer's Memo. Have we addressed all your concerns or is there still pending issues? Okay, so we'll leave that.
You can leave it, it's minor.
Okay, excellent. Start back up again. A, the applicant addresses all concerns raised in the Assistant City Engineer's Memo to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. B, the applicant provides draft language for the easement shown on the plan, which again, we have, we just had not time to review it yet. Two, that the private way and hammerhead turnaround be maintained and kept clear year-round to provide access for emergency vehicles. Three, after private way construction is complete, provide a engineer's stamp letter to the city stating that the private way has been constructed per city of Sanford standards and the approved site plan. And four, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantees, number three, AutoCAD submission, number four, signed recorded plat, number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Congratulations. Have a good night. All right, moving on to item number three. New business file G thirty dash sixteen Gilmett Street. Jamie, can you orient us on this one?
Yeah, this is an inventory and analysis request for a major subdivision to create ten residential lots on property owned by Ashcroft Construction located off the end of Gilmett Street. Gilmett Street is kind of near High Street, it's kind of up in the woods a little bit.
Good evening, once again, Rob McSorley with Sebago's Technics, address seventy-five John Roberts Road here representing the applicant, Ashcroft Construction. What's before you is an inventory and analysis submission for a proposed ten lot residential subdivision at the end of the current, forgive my pronunciation, Gilmett Street. It's on tax map, G thirty, lots sixteen and sixteen A. It's about a thirteen and a half acre tract. On the plan here, we've indicated some of the constraints that were noted in your submission. There are wetlands on the site. Most of the development that we're doing will be south of those wetlands. There is an unnamed stream that's kind of over to the north lily side and wraps down around towards and drains to the Mussum River. There's some minor amount of steep slopes on the site. And to the top of the plan, you'll see there's a central main power easement to the north. I hope those aren't rats. Relative to the environmental natural communities on site, the wetlands were reviewed by a licensed soil evaluator. And during that time, there was inspection for bernal pools, there were none on site. The records by the state of Maine indicate that this is not a wetland of special significance. Also reviewing of the state maps relative to natural communities in habitation areas, none were so noted of concern. And the project is not loaded located over a sand gravel aquifer. What we're proposing is ten lots, basically in the ten thousand square foot limit or requirement. We do have one lot that is less than ten thousand square feet. We're going to look and see whether we can reconfigure that or whether we ask for a consideration of that. I believe the zoning allows us to go down to sixty-five hundred, but we will make it as large as we can. Right now is intended to be a private way, but because of the number of lots that we're proposing, it will be built to the city road standards. It will have a swale system that will drain. The site mainly drains in one direction down from the beginning of the road to the end. And we will, as part of the development, put in a stormwater filter at the end to handle detention and treatment for the roadway. As part of the project, we propose to extend the existing water that's on Gilmett Street. And for sewer, there is a sewer line off the adjacent property. And we will be tying into that, it's very shallow. As we mentioned at the site plan review committee meeting yesterday, we will probably design a low-pressure force main system where every individual house will have its own little private residential pump station to go to a private force main that pumps up into that main hole that then gravity feeds down into the city system. For the lots, we'll probably use some type of drip edge BMP and some type of depress storage slash treatment for the individual lots. We may have some minor wetland impacts at the end of the road where the T turnaround is, but we expect those to be probably less than forty-three hundred square feet, which falls under the exemption for a permit from Maine Department of Environmental Protection. And last, we are going to ask, request for one waiver, and that's for sidewalks within the development or the proposed private right-of-way. There are no other sidewalks in this general neighborhood. And so we're going to ask or request a waiver to that extent. With that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions relative to materials that you were provided about the development.
Right, thank you. Jamie, do we have to do with an I A, do we have to do a public hearing? Okay. Yeah, I was going to address that because I, you know, I spoke about that. So while this is not a typical public hearing, I do want to give the opportunity for the public to speak, so.
We've already talked with Mr. Bujie and we'll have an ongoing conversation with him. He's the director by there and been very cordial to deal with that.
Would you like to address the board or?
Yep, he's addressing concerns, we're going to talk with the owner about those. And we may have a sit-down and just, you know, so that we can resolve those issues before the formal submission comes back before you.
All right, appreciate that. Appreciate you working together to kind of hash this out and then bring it to us with the plan, so. All right, does anybody on the board have any comments? Lenny?
Yeah, just one quick question, is the extension to Gilmett Street, is that going to be accepted as a public road?
Right now, it's intended to be a private way, that may change. It is being built to the city standards, so it certainly can be. There are some advantages to that relative to the fire protection, the fire hydrant that will apparently need to be put in as part of the project and whatnot. So we're going to have that discussion with the applicant and see where he wants to go with it.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns from the board?
I just have a quick question in regards to the dead end. It looks very close to the wetlands, and I know that you already touched base on this, but is there any concern for runoff, being that close to wetlands?
We've done some preliminary grading on it, and we've actually, the end of the road drains back towards into the site. Hold this up here. Kind of rate adjacent to the T turnaround is where we're going to propose to put some storage treatment. The end of the, we're proposing the end of the T to drain back to that, and then this whole roadway drains down to it. So there should be no direct runoff from the pavement from the roadway into that.
Great, thank you.
All right, last call, any other comments or concerns? Very detailed set of plans for inventory analysis, so I appreciate that. I appreciate the discussions that are ongoing, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing more. All right, so going on to number four, new business file number J twenty-nine dash eighteen, thirteen River Street, Stenton Trust Mill. Right, we've heard, we've talked about this already, but Jamie can just reorient us on it and.
Just a refresher, this is the Stenton Trust Mill building on River Street. They came through for preliminary approval, well, just a month and a half, two months ago, just a short time ago. Not a lot of changes were needed, so they turned those plans rapidly. And in the last week, they have been rapid-fire in updates as well, so not all of those. There might be some conditions related to those because there haven't been time to review all of them. But it's ninety residential units, commercial on the first floor, still unknown commercial tenant on the first floor, so it's kind of being reviewed as the ninety residential units with potential future commercial. And they'll have to come back for approval on the commercial space when they find the tenant.
So are you here to speak on behalf of this project?
I have presentation, I know you guys have seen it before, I'm not sure you want to see it again. I could put it in and just go to the slides that have new changes and updates.
Yeah, that would, unless somebody else would like to see more. I mean, this was pretty fresh for us.
No, I think that would be perfect.
That would be great.
Where do I? By your knees, it should open. Perfect. Okay, so I'm not going to bore everybody with the history of Wynn again and who we all are. You've seen us so many times at this point, like bored of our faces.
Before you start, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Lauren Canapari, thirty-five Prentice Street, Cambridge, Massachusetts, with Wynn Development. So I'll go through, we went through all this. Everyone see, anyone see this yet?
I see it now.
One of these screens.
I think it might be working now, Ben.
Is it working? Great. Um, so, there we go, great. Um, so I skipped over, you know, everything that, that hasn't really changed since the last time. These are the, um, the site improvements we talked about, as Jamie mentioned, the, um, parking for residential, um, with the 10 additional on-street spaces that, um, are, are not included in our parking count that we're, we're requesting here. Um, you know, our, our big changes from our previous, um, the previous meeting we had, we were here in April, um, are to the site plan, um, really the, the drainage, um, calculation analysis that had to be done, but I'll let Jesse Johnson, who is our civil engineer, speak about this, um, a little bit, and, and Jesse, just let me know when you want me to go to the site plan.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Jesse Johnson, Western and Sampson Engineers. I'm at 30 Turner Road in Townsend, Massachusetts. And what you're seeing right now is just a, a bulleted item list of some of the drainage improvements that we made since the last time you saw the project. Most of them related to the fact that we had to vet out the proposed connection we wanted to make from our site into the drainage network in Davis Ave behind our site. So, we were requested to do a full analysis of the existing drainage network and everything contributing to it upstream and where it ultimately terminates downstream to analyze the impact of our stormwater runoff going into that pipe network for the 10-year storm event. And when we had done that, we had found that there was going to be a potential for the calculations of, uh, overcapacity of us exceeding the capacity of that drainage network, so we had to provide some onsite mitigation, which involved, uh, proposing the construction of an infiltration basin that will take the water, collect it, treat it, uh, capture it in, in underdrain system, and then eventually discharge it into the pipe network at Davis Ave. But what that does is it, it slows it down, and it helps just offset some of the timing so that we can make sure that we're not gonna create some downstream problem from our site after full development. Uh, we did vet this out with Maine DEP. They were happy to see this additional BMP added. We also talked about with, uh, the local engineering staff. They were also in agreement with our approach and our analysis. Uh, so that's what we, the new plans reflect all the changes we need to make to make that happen. Uh, we also did address various comments that we got from your city staff, the fire department, water department, other engineering comments, planning staff. So, we incorporated everything into the latest plan set that you see. Uh, just a quick highlight of some of the things on here. We modified the snow storage to better reflect some of the areas in between proposed light poles and trees, make it a little bit more accurate for what you would have for available snow storage. We updated the parking calc to accommodate the proposed bedrooms that are gonna be provided in the building and take out the commercial space, understanding that when that commercial space is eventually determined later on, that an additional amendment would have to be applied for later on, and we'd have to prove the parking is adequate at that time. So, what we really wanted to do was just show you the parking calc here for the proposed residential units, which we know are going to happen for this project. Uh, and outside of that, it was really just minor housekeeping and cleaning up the plans, as I had mentioned. Uh, and then also there was a request to go to the design review committee, and I can let Jonathan Law, the landscape architect for the project, discuss some of the changes that came about from that.
Good evening, everybody. Jonathan Law, Western Sampson, um, landscape architect in the design group. I live at 10 Lincoln Street in Natick, Massachusetts. So, as Jesse mentioned, um, we covered all, uh, comments that we received at the, the last meeting and, and the meeting with design review committee. Um, the, the landscape changes that were made, we had, um, a couple of, uh, comments about some of the species that we selected, um, for the site from one particular member of the design review committee. Um, we made the edits that she requested, um, you know, changing out a couple of species that she felt didn't do so well in this, in this region, so we, we changed those out. We looked at space and some of the trees in relationship to the central island and some of the light poles, so again, we addressed that issue. And then there's another comment that came up, um, from the fire marshal about, um, the trees that are located against the, the drive. So, the, the planting plan is a grammatic, a, a, a grammatic plan, so in the field, we can, we can place the trees a little bit further away from, from the, the roadway. This is just showing sort of a design intent. Once we get into the field and under construction, we can make sure that we place trees far enough away so they don't impede any, uh, access of that main driveway. Um, and then we just showed, as Jesse mentioned, we're showing a little bit of planting in the new basin that's, uh, adjacent to Davis Ave. Um, and that's pretty much it in terms of the landscape changes that we made. We were also asked to provide some imagery of potential benches and site furniture that would be, um, located on the, um, the green open space to the left of the building, and then the, the removable tables and chairs would be in the plaza space on the, the backside between the parking lot and the, and the entrance to the building. Um, the design review committee wanted to see some options for that, so we selected small, foldable, um, tables and chairs that could be stored inside the building. And then the next slide, um, they wanted to understand what the paving patterns may look like in that plaza space as you enter the building. These are just some options that we're researching right now. We're not, we don't have anything, um, set in stone, but the, you know, there's an option there for some type of concrete unit paver in the gray and, um, uh, sort of dark gray hues, or we could relate to the building a little bit more and go with kind of a brick, uh, a brick type of pattern and coloring. Um, so that's where our current thinking is, but again, we're still sort of working through those finer details. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much, guys. Um, so, you know, this is kind of, we've seen this before, our pre, our other projects, um, you know, that, that we believe are kind of most similar to what, uh, the Stenton Mill will look like when it's completed. Um, and kind of just an update of our timeline, um, you know, most importantly, um, some, you know, updates since our April 4th and 5th meeting. Um, we had design review board approval, um, on May 10th. Uh, we received approval of our Part 1 historic application by the Maine Ship-O, which is really exciting because that means it's, it's really happening, and, and they are, um, excited about the historic significance of the building as well. Um, we have had our, um, request for congressional earmark funding, um, along with the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council has been accepted by Senator King and, and put into budget, and we'll, hopefully, we'll be hearing more about that funding in August 2023. Um, really, our, our most important thing right now is our pre-application, uh, due July 6th, um, which is a few weeks away, um, that we need, um, basically this approval for so we can say, listen, the project is actually happening, it's ready to go, it's gonna be shovel-ready as soon as we get our financing, um, so we can start construction as soon as possible. So, that's, that's kind of all the, all the updates, um, I have. I don't wanna, um, take too much time on the presentation since we've seen most of it before.
All right, thank you. Uh, this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Uh, nah, as a proponent of this project? Anybody on Zoom? Yes. I can't see who, yeah.
Hi, uh, good evening. Keith McBride, um, Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council. Um, I just want to say that this project has been something that I know that, uh, the folks at Wind Development have been working on for a long time, uh, with their, um, with their friends at Western and Sampson. Uh, but it's also something I think the community has been looking for, for a long time. Now, the presence of this building in a really prominent, visible location close to our premier water body, the number one pond, and the, the focus of the raise grant money improvements that are gonna be going on along there. It's the right time, and I think it's something that's been sought after. But speaking of timing, I just wanted to point out, uh, kind of going off of what, some of what Lauren was just mentioning, the timing really matters. Um, a lot of what she just mentioned with regard to, um, uh, state historic preservation and some of the other, uh, things that are lining up on timing are, are putting them in a, in a very favorable position to attain the financing that they need. The truth of the matter is in this project that, uh, the city desperately needs this property redeveloped, and it's gonna take significant private investment to get that done, and it's also gonna take significant other programs to financially make it worthwhile. Wind Development is absolutely 100% the right type of developer to make this happen. They've done it before, and they have an outstanding track record. What they need from the city is they need, uh, to get everything done in a timely fashion, so I think tonight is an important meeting for them to make sure that they can say to, uh, especially to the Maine State Housing, um, to whom they're gonna be applying for some financing, that the project is shovel-ready and that they've got the, uh, the local approvals that they need to be able to move forward on a timeframe that works for everybody. So, um, I wanna thank staff, especially Jamie and, uh, and Aaron, who have, uh, worked really hard on, on getting us to this point and getting them to the point where we're, um, seeking final approval, um, perhaps with some, uh, with some waivers, I think they've already talked to you about. I'm not gonna go into that, um, tonight, uh, and that's, that's, it's a great feather in the cap of the city to have this project moving forward, but the timing really does matter, and I hope we can get that approval, um, this evening. It's a great project for the city. We'd love to see it, uh, love to see it move forward.
Perfect. Uh, anybody else who would like to speak in favor? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anybody who would like to speak, uh, neither for nor against, would like to make a comment or ask a question? Right, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and, uh, we'll pick it up on our end. So, any discussion from the planning board?
I could just ask one question from a design standpoint. I know during the design meeting, there was a discussion about the color of the windows. I don't know if you guys had come to a decision on it yet, whether they were gonna be kind of a greenish tint or more of a black color?
I, I think the greenish tint is the way we're at. Again, some of the final approval from Maine, uh, preservation, others send the pressure, but, yeah, originally they'll agree.
Okay, great. Any other comments, concerns?
I just wanted to make a comment, um, that this looks really great, and I'm very excited for it. Um, I really appreciate listening to the feedback, um, between planning board and design review committee, and you could tell that you put a lot of, um, time and energy and effort, and, um, I appreciate all of that.
Thanks, Crystal. All right, so I had a couple things. Uh, I know we discussed at length parking last time. Uh, right now, we're allowed to waive up to 30%, which brings it down to 107. They're proposing 126, so we're all well within that. And that doesn't include the on, the on-street parking that they've also proposed, so, um, I, unless anybody has any concerns with that, okay, so we'll set that aside. Um, the only question I have, and that's, again, this is more of a procedural, uh, I know we've just talked about there's still some discussion on the hardscaping. Uh, are we gonna have an issue approving that tonight with the hardscaping yet to be defined?
Typically speaking, subdivision site plan approval is, uh, proven the view from the sky. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be a patio. Um, what the materials of the patio can be worked out through the design review process and, uh, the normal permanent process. So, if, if they're proposing a patio where it shows patio, as far as a site planners goes, it's okay.
Yeah, I've never seen anything like this before, but I wanted to just make sure we dotted i's and crossed t's, so. All right, uh, so do we have findings of fact?
And in advance, this is, uh, major site plan and subdivision, so it's a little bit longer. 275-10-31 pollution has been met because the layout for the proposed development takes into consideration existing topography and features of the site. Site grading is designed to minimize excessive cuts and fills and blends in with the surrounding properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-38, impact on aesthetics, open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access has been met because the proposed development shall not negatively impact aesthetics, open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habitat, or shoreline access.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-39, conformance with other regulations has been met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in chapters 270, so, 275, and 280.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-46, recreation in open space areas has been met because the proposed plans demonstrate that recreation and open space requirements have been met.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.1, utilization of the site has been met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.10 utilities has been met because adequate provisions have been made for utilities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.11, natural features has been met because the project is designed to minimize impacts on natural features of the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.13, exterior lighting has been met because exterior lighting associated with the proposed development shall be capped, shielded, directed downwards, and retained on-site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.15 landscaping has been met with the condition that the applicant landscape according to the design review committee recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.18 buffering has been met because adequate provisions are proposed to screen the development from surrounding residences.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7.14 and 275-10-37, solid waste has been met because solid waste is proposed to be deposited into enclosed dumpsters and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-40, financial and technical capacity, and 280-16-7.17, technical and financial capacity has been met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-41, impact on water quality in shoreline, and 280-16-7.16, shoreline relationship has been met because the proposed development is designed to minimize site impact in the shoreline zone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-43, floodplains, 275-10-44, identification of freshwater wetlands, 275-10-48, spaghetti lots, 280-16-7.19, airport, are not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-32, water supply, 275-10-36, sewer disposal, 280-16-7.28, water supply, and 280-16-7.9, sewer disposal has been met because the proposed plans demonstrate there is adequate water supply in sewer disposal to support the proposed development and shall not impact negatively the existing water supply or sanitary waste disposal systems.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-33, impact on existing water supply, 275-10-34, soil erosion, 275-10-42, impact on groundwater quality or quantity, 275-10-42- on groundwater quality or quantity, 275-10-45, stormwater, 275-10-47, phosphorus, and 280-16-7.6, stormwater, 280-16.7.7, erosion, and 280-16-7.12, groundwater have been met because adequate provisions have been made for stormwater management, including best management practices for water quality impact and erosion control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
275-10-35, traffic conditions, 280-16-7.2, access to the site, 280-16-7.3, access into the site, 280-16-7.4, internal vehicular circulation, and 280-16-7.5, pedestrian circulation have been met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic and is designed to minimize impact.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero. All right. We have a suggested motion?
We do. The planning board accept the information in the June 19, 2023 summer report, in the June 21st, 2023 recommendation to the planning board, grant the requested waivers, and find that the application for file J2918 to construct 90 mixed-income units with commercial space on the ground level has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance with the following conditions. One, by July 21st, 2023, unless other arrangements have been made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to the issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, that the applicant updates the subdivision plan to show parking calculations along with the requested waiver reduction. B, the applicant updates the plan to show the 8-inch to 6-inch water main reducer near the fire hydrant. C, the final plan submitted for planning board signature and recording must encompass the entire property and have all unnecessarily background layers removed. And finally, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number three, AutoCAD submission, number four, signed recorded plat, number six, inspection fee escrow, number seven, pre-construction meeting, number nine, alteration of plans, and number 10, modifications to plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? I had one comment on there, just that we talked about the commercial space on the first floor, which we didn't hear anything about. We aren't planning, aren't approving anything there.
So we're approving a blank commercial space on the first floor because the zone that this property is located in has to be mixed-use. So we're, we're approving it with the understanding that at some point, they'll have to come back for that approval.
Okay.
But it needed to be on note that it was going to be commercial on the first floor.
I'm good with that. Any other concerns?
No.
All right. All in favor? Five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job on everything. It's coming together really nicely.
All right. Couple things that weren't on our agenda, but they typically are, so planning director report. Do you have anything for us tonight, Jamie?
Just same, same old story. We continue to be pleasantly surprised by the amount of pre-apps and applications and stuff coming in. To everybody's glory, there is a holiday for the next meeting, so we're going to, we're going to get a slight reprieve in, in meetings, which will give staff time to get caught up on some of the staff level and, and other stuff that we've got to do in between these meetings. Jan is continuing to stuff three to five pre-apps a week down our schedules. But on her defense, she has joined those pre-apps and is helping out with the notes and stuff for, for me and Aaron and Alex. But it's, it's continuing to stay steady. We're really seeing not much of a reprieve.
You almost got it.
Yeah. I can officially say we're caught up. We're now processing applications as they come in instead of having them sit for a little bit. I, I can't remember a time that we had, we had six items on the site plan agenda yesterday, four of which got transferred to you guys. I, I can't remember that we've had, we had five site plans two weeks ago, we had six this time. I mean, we're in unprecedented waters here. I mean, this is, this is awesome. And with, we have some good stuff coming through pre-apps, we have some little stuff, we have some decent stuff. So I, I continue to feel very proud to, to be part of this equation, and I think Sanford is continuing to be on the upside of the hill.
Thank you. Any, any communications from the rest of the board? All right. I have just a couple things. We talked about how fast we're getting through things, and that's great. I just, I've been really pleased, I've been, I've been on the board for four and a half years now. The quality of the applications we're getting, it just, it makes, it makes this job a lot easier, I think. We're not having to guess what, what the intent was or anything like that, so we're getting a lot of first-time quality, and I'm sure it goes a lot back to you guys for reviewing things and catching things on the front end and getting a lot of that done so that we're...
But this is a tag-team effort. We, we approached you six, eight months ago now with the question of, do we want to continue the way we have been with approving these things with 100 conditions? Or do we want to kind of hold the consultant's feet to the fire and, and make them prepare our good plans? It took a while to get here, but we, we are here. It does cause a lot more work on, on the staff's end to, to process the stuff as it comes through. But in the end, I, I hold two roles, Alex holds two roles, we spend a fair amount of our time looking back at, at plans and everything, and it makes our job a whole lot easier, and the people that replace me and replace Alex after she replaces me and...
You're never going anywhere. I don't know what you're talking about.
Long, long down the road, it makes everybody's job easier, so I, I thank you guys for, for instructing us to, to do that, and, and I think we're already starting to see the, the reactions of that and the results of that in a very short amount of time.
No, and I appreciate it because it does make, like I said, it makes our job easier. I mean, we're going through maybe four, four items in a relatively short meeting, so that's excellent. A lot of just good quality things coming up in front of us. So I also noticed that everything that was reheard tonight was seen yesterday at site plan review. Is that going to continue, or are we going to get to a point where there is a gap in between?
We're working on it.
Hopefully, that takes some of the load off of you to do a bunch of...
So, so one of the projects yesterday, which is Sanford Housing Authority, they call it Melsom Commons, Melsom River Commons, which confused me because we had the Melsom River Bistro, and I was sending wrong reports to everybody, and so I'm going to make it so we don't have two of the same name on any agenda ever again. But no, that, that is really the first one that, that came through the pre-apps after we started this process. So for the next little bit, there's going to be a couple mixed back and forth, and poor Jan, she, she's getting a little bit confused because we're, we're throwing, we're tossing it up where, oh, no, this one goes tomorrow, where this one goes two weeks, and it's a learning curve on everybody involved. There's, there's, there's a few left of the ones that we're told we're doing back-to-back, and, and we're going to start seeing more of the ones that we're told we're doing it two weeks apart.
I appreciate that. Jamie, I just want to add, too. That one in particular, we've already talked about it for the next, the next meetings where we might have to...
So, thank you, Matt. The Housing Authority is on a very, very similar, if not more, confined timetable for their project. So even though that one might have been one that would typically be two weeks behind, we told them that if they, if they are able to prepare a good plan and one that does not need major modifications to get on their timeline, or they're going to lose their funding, that we would, we would do them back-to-back. And it's one that needs preliminary and final, so when I mean back-to-back, you might see preliminary tonight and final two weeks from tonight, as in that much back-to-back to hit their very aggressive schedule. But they've been working on this plan set now for a year and a half at least, so there's one decent hurdle that still is up in the air that I won't discuss, to leave it up to you guys to discuss next, next time. But if they can get through the one potential hurdle, then the plans are really good.
So just to be clear on that, I'm not, it's not that I'm concerned with them being back-to-back, I just don't want to end up with 17 conditions that should have been adjudicated before we got here. So...
No, we...
I'm okay if we can go back-to-back for something like this and make it more of an exception, but to...
You'll never get to complain from me that we're, we're not approving plans with a bunch of conditions. The conditions tonight were all minor, easily addressable, most of them have already been addressed, just not formally reviewed, so we kept them as conditions. I have no problem with this minor stuff. There were some stuff that basically, oh, here's the back of a blank piece of paper, yet we're approving that, and that's really where I have heartbreak.
All right. Any other, anything else on the board? All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second, third, something.
All in favor? Five zero.